4:00 PM, I'm going to call this meeting of the Putnam County Planning Commission to order. I want to thank everyone for being here and I want to let you know that we appreciate your public participation and we appreciate your exercising your civic duties and responsibilities. There's several things about this meeting we're going to be doing a little bit differently than what we've done in the past and I'm going to go on record at noting these things. The first is, we're going to start off with Mr. Hafner's going to read our Code of Ethics, which is what we ascribe to as members of the planning board, and then we're going to, I will go through our legal responsibilities. We also will declare any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest before we move into the first cases. The way the cases normally run is we'll have the staff report, questions of staff, the applicant or the applicant's agent will be given a chance to speak, again, questions of the applicant, applicant's agent. Then we open the public comment portion of the hearing and anyone wanting to speak for or against any of the cases that are coming before us today will be given a chance to speak. We're asking everyone who wants to speak to please fill out an orange speaker card so we have a record that you're coming forward. With the third case that we're going to have today, we will do it a little differently. After the owner/agent has spoken, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application will be given a chance to speak for three minutes, which is our normal standard procedure, and then we will bring one of the people up who has a great deal of history with this project in speaking and giving her 10 minutes because she's representing a neighborhood. If there's no one else wishing to speak after that time, we will bring the owner back up and allow the owner to respond to any concerns or questions that have been raised throughout that time and right now it looks like we'll probably give you five minutes, Skeet. So that's how the meeting is going to run. We've got two cases coming up before we go into the third one, so let's get underway. Mr. Hafner?
As a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission, I pledge to come to meeting prepared for the items on the agenda, willing and ready to listen carefully and courteously to make informed decisions based on the facts presented and what I feel is in the best interest of the people and businesses of Putnam County. I will refrain from unnecessary interruptions and I will be appreciative of the respectful and respectful toward applicants, members of staff, and other members of this commission. I will support the decisions made by the majority and I will be fair and objective in all that I do as a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing and we're the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this board will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting, and it's not November 23rd, I don't think we can get that ready in 14 days. I believe it's December 14th, isn't it Gabriel?
Yes, yes it is.
Yes, so anything we do will be moved on to the Board of County Commissioners for a December 14th hearing. Procedurally, we'll call each case by name and number, a member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative followed by public comments concerning the request. Please direct all questions to the commission and not other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. This motion will be voted on by commission members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination regarding this application, and again, that will be on December 14th. I need to ask, has there been any ex parte communication between anyone on the board and any one of the applicants coming before us today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please tell us the nature of that.
I went to visit, not this case, but the last one.
Put your mic on, Ken. There you go. You went to visit?
I went to visit the property.
Which property are we talking about?
The third one.
The third case on our?
The third case.
Okay.
And while, when I pulled up, Skeet pulled up right after, a minute after I got there, and I rode around with him, he showed me what was there.
Okay. Does that have any impact on how you will vote today?
No, I'd never been there before.
I understand. Some of us would love to be out in the woods, but just don't go out in the woods and play with those toys, but a lot of people do. Any other ex parte communication? Aaron?
I spoke to Skeet on the phone just to get access to the property.
Got to get closer.
I spoke to Skeet on the phone just to have access to the property. I didn't know if it would be locked when I got there and that was the extent of the conversation. He said it would be open, so.
Is that going to affect, is that going to any way impact your vote?
No, not at all.
I also was approached by one of the members of the Board of County Commissioners who entreated me to help make this happen for our case number three, and Mr. Perry was standing there when that happened, and I can assure you that his comments to me will not impact anything that I think, say, or do concerning this case. Mr. Perry, any questions you have for any of us?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with one of the, either of the cases that we have coming before us, either of the properties? All right. With that being said, we will now move on to small map amendment 21-001. Wendy?
This application is for David and Mary Jean Smith. It's a small-scale map amendment from rural residential to rural center on a single parcel containing .39 acres plus minus acres to our neighborhood commercial and its uses. The property is located at 1443 County Road 309 Georgetown. The parcel currently is designated rural residential. Of course, it's .39 acres, contains 87 feet of frontage on County Road 309, and it is currently vacant. This is an aerial photo of the parcel. This is the current land use and current zoning. The Comprehensive Plan for Rural Residential states that this category consists of areas located adjacent to new municipalities and areas designated urban service, urban reserve, and rural center. Areas interspurred with the active agricultural areas and areas around water bodies. Neighborhood commercial uses may be permitted when approved through a PUD zoning district in compliance with the requirements of a PUD. Now, the rural center allows for, consists of areas in the county where focal points and of existing and future development are in rural areas of the county. Rural centers typically include some of all of the following: intersection of two rural collectors or arterial roadways, commercial buildings, existing public and community buildings. Neighborhood commercial development and community commercial development are permitted. This site and standard location, uses, and policies of A193A5C under the commercial future land use category shall apply. In addition to the commercial uses, will be, future commercial uses will be discouraged from locating a strip pattern along roadways. Types of commercial uses and site development standards are subject to further regulation by the commercial zoning district standards provided in the Land Development Code. This parcel is also subject to the rezoning, as a rezoning request. The existing land use designation of rural residential limits commercial to planned unit development. The parcel has access to County Road 309, a major collector-designated road, and adopted level of service D and operates acceptively. The surrounding land uses consist primarily of neighborhood-supporting commercial uses and low-density residential uses. Established commercial uses in the vicinity include the Georgetown Post Office, the Georgetown United Methodist Church, Cozy Cemetery, Marina and DJ Marine and Boat Storage Facility, which is currently in the process of development. The findings in the recommendations, the staff find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, would be consistent with the locational requirements for C1 zoning, compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the future land use map from rural residential to rural center for the subject parcel.
Does anyone on the board have questions of staff? Is the owner/applicant present? Would you like to come forth and speak?
David Smith, 110 Bass Road. It's a parcel between the?
Bass Road where?
Georgetown, Florida.
Okay, thank you. We have to have it for the?
In the neighborhood. It's a parcel between the post office and the cemetery on, right on, with road frontage on 309. So I'm really here to just answer any questions. What we want to do is put an office there for our environmental consulting firm. But if you have any questions, I'm here.
Are there any questions of the applicant/owner? Okay, hearing none? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, motion, and vote. What are your thoughts, folks?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve it. What is the case number? I'm sorry, I don't have?
SM 21-001.
SM 21-001, as it's consistent with our goals, plans, and objectives.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Hafner has seconded it. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I live on County Road 309, about a mile away from this proposed site. This site is a very small piece of property located between the cemetery and the church.
Post office.
It's on a curve, and the curve is a no-C curve. In other words, if you come on it from the post office side and try to look down to the east, which is east in that area, you can't see anybody coming to approach you. If you're coming the other way, when you're coming out of the post office, you can't see anybody coming around that curve, so it is the opinion of myself, anyway, and a few of the residents that have seen the signs, that this is not the right place to put any commercial establishment. I understand the rural center and I understand getting the zoning down to where they're trying to get it down to to put some kind of a building there for development and water services. I usually check on these properties when they come up before the planning commission or our board to find out who the owners are, where they came from, et cetera. And what I found out yesterday was the property had just been acquired back in August on a tax deed, which doesn't really matter, it's just the fact that I more was concerned that it was going to be kind of a flip on property rather than a real change for a business coming into our community. So it had me a little bit concerned. But regardless of that, I believe it's not the right spot to put any establishment that's going to bring in traffic of any kind on that curve. I feel it would be dangerous and I think it would be an accident just waiting to happen. So because of that, I wouldn't vote for it.
Okay. At this point, Mr. Smith, can you talk to us about the amount of traffic that will be in and out of your facility?
Very minimal. It's just going to be a 1,200 square foot office, I think, something like that, with maybe four employees, and we have no customers at all. And I understand what you're saying about the visibility, but if we can come in, we could clear off some of those trees that's actually causing the problem on this property. You know, the post office is clear, but then, and so is the cemetery, but this is very wooded, and we could clear back a 20-foot buffer or whatever is appropriate, so you could see better coming around that curve.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does that help, Tom?
I understand what can be done. Again, we've changed, recommended zoning changes on many, many pieces of property, and there's some that just stay exactly the same as what we saw before we made the recommendation. This particular property has approximately 40 trees on it. They do come right up to the road. They are tall, tall trees. It's a forest, and the opinion of some of the residents that saw the signs, they're very difficult to see, by the way, because you go around?
On the curve, and they're?
You don't see them. But the few calls that I get, did get, did say, were very concerned about putting any retail on this street, because they didn't know what the retail was going to be. It could have been any one of four or five different categories from what was in the packet.
Sure.
Not until I got here did I see anything about what the petitioner proposed. But still and all, it's going to be something that's going to be controversial. I know there'll be people that are going to be more concerned when it comes up to front of the commission, so I just thought I'd just express the opinions, one is mine, as well as the few people that have seen the signs and talked to me over the telephone just yesterday and today, because I was at a commission over the weekend and Monday.
Well, we appreciate that.
That's my opinion. I will not go for this project in this particular site. It's a great idea, but it can go someplace else.
Thank you, Tom.
Madam Chair, may I add something?
Certainly.
Any development would have to go first before the Development Review Committee, which at that time, visibility, road accessibility, and all of those items are reviewed. So the visual triangle, how the driveway is coming off, that will all be part of the review during the development review of any, any kind of development, except for a single-family home, that would go on that property.
Thank you, Pam. Anybody else have a question for staff or a concern about this project before we bring it to a vote? Hearing none, I will call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
The motion has passed, and now we're going to move on to R21-020. Don't have my glasses on for that one.
This, again, is for David and Mary Jean Smith. This is the companion application for the project. This is a zoning map amendment for a single parcel of .39 acres from residential R1 to neighborhood commercial C1. The property is located at 1443 County Road 309 Georgetown. The parcel is current, the parcel will be designated resident, rural center by the time this, this goes through, because we did the first one first, and the parcel, it's .39 acres, contains 87 feet of frontage along 309, the property is vacant. Again, the aerial, the future land use, the current zoning district. The Comprehensive Plan, just as I had mentioned, within the other portion, the rural center allows for neighborhood commercial development and community commercial development. The existing R1 zoning provides a residential zoning district for use primarily in rural residential, rural center, urban service, and urban reserve land use classifications. The purpose of the C1 district is to provide a commercial for the proposed, the C1 zoning district, excuse me, is to provide a commercial zoning district for the neighborhood, commercial land use, and rural center, urban reserve, and urban service. The use categories allowed in the C1 district are retail sales, general, and food, services except tap-too parlors, office, and childcare and adult daycare centers, so it's a very limited availability within that district. The future land use designation for the parcel, if the companion Comprehensive Plan map amendment is approved, would be rural center pursuant to the policy of neighborhood commercial development is permitted. The parcel has access to 309, a major collector-designated road, and has an adopted level of service of D. The surrounding land use consists of the neighboring-supporting commercial uses, just as I had mentioned before, the post office, the cemetery, the church. And staff finds that the rezoning of C1 is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, consistent with the locational requirements of the C1 zoning district, and compatible with the surrounding land use. The staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from R1 to neighborhood commercial C1 for the subject parcel.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions of staff? Mr. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Same thing.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the board, then. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this application? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Thoughts and comments on the board, Tom?
Jane, I got you.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on this particular application? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
We've got to make a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Aaron. Just getting ahead of myself. Do I hear a motion? Don't all jump at once. Do we want?
I'll make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
R21?
R21-020, as it is consistent with our goals and objectives of Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. And Jerry seconds that. All right, now I can call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, sir. All right, carries by a vote of six to one. Wendy, thank you very much for all of your excellent work.
Thank you.
All right.
Permission to approach?
You need to?
DeSantis?
Certainly.
Call me with my phone number. We don't want, we want to be an asset to the community, not a detriment.
Thank you.
And call me with any concerns you have or anything you want to talk about.
Appreciate it.
Okay, let the record reflect that Mr. Smith has asked Mr. DeSantis to please be in touch with him about any concerns, and gave him his phone number. Thank you. Y'all are keeping me honest this afternoon. We're going to do a little changing of the guard up at the desk, and Gabriel is going to present the next case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is PUD number 20-006. I'm going to go through a presentation here and then I'll move back over there because I have my redlined version of the copy over there. The applicant has requested to amend the Magnolia Dunes PUD to provide for a second entrance and exit to help move traffic on County Road 310 more effectively. Staff supports the request to add an additional ingress and egress point to facilitate access to and circulation within the development. Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy A19310F states that rural recreational uses are permitted within the agricultural future land use category. The policy states that the location, scale, and intensity of rural recreational uses shall be compatible with the overall character of the existing and future development of the area. The same policy additionally mentions the importance of ensuring natural resource protection and the mitigation of off-site traffic and noise impacts. In order to further this policy, staff has proposed revisions to the allowed uses and conditions, development standards, and enforcement standards of the Magnolia Dunes planned unit development. These staff-recommended changes are intended to further implement the stated policy by providing additional protections to the environmentally sensitive areas on the site and to assist in the mitigation of off-site traffic and noise impacts. They are additionally intended to protect the public welfare, regulate uses that have been introduced into the PUD that are not currently permitted, maintain compatibility of the PUD with the surrounding area, and clarify ambiguities in the existing ordinance. I'm happy to go through any questions that the commission has on the specific changes that we made, and the staff recommendation is that the proposed amendment to the PUD ordinance advances the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan, and staff recommends approval of the request to amend the Magnolia Dunes PUD, providing for a second exit and entrance, and providing for revisions to the allowed uses and conditions on such uses, development standards, and enforcement standards of the Magnolia Dunes PUD as shown on the proposed ordinance attached. Briefly going through this slideshow, this is just an aerial image of the PUD property, future land use map. The entire property is agricultural, too. The zoning map. Special flood hazard areas. There should be a wetlands map within the ordinance as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
What is the LOS on County Road 310?
It's a rural, rural collector, and that's a D.
Okay.
The adopted LOS.
Okay. Do we have any traffic counts out there to know how this falls within the capacity of a Level D LOS?
We'd have to look at our 2019 traffic study that the county performed. I'm not certain whether we do, but I have, I have a feeling that we may have some data, but it may not be complete.
Okay. That would be, that would be something that would be brought up by the DRC, wouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where exactly is he going to put the second entrance from the main entrance?
So that's not shown on the master site plan currently, but that will be determined at the time of development review, and I'm sure the applicant would be able to state the location.
Okay.
Okay. Another question I have is, at the last time we brought, had this come before us, in 2019, there was a gentleman who came forward and said that he owned a couple of lots within that subdivision that was basically vacated for this PUD to be established in 2008. Does the applicant own all of the lots in that subdivision at this time?
No, ma'am, and only a portion of that subdivision has been vacated, so there are still some lots that are owned by others that are totally contained within the bounds of the PUD.
And do those other people and owners have access to their properties?
I'm not certain of that because I don't know where their properties are on the ground. There would, there is legal access on the plat, but whether something's obstructing it, I don't know.
We don't have an overlay on that, okay. Any other questions of staff at this point? Joel?
I don't know if my, is it on?
Maybe you need to use the one next to you.
Okay.
Turn it on.
I don't know.
Turn it on, yeah. Oh, it's on?
Okay. It looked green to me. I don't see how that somebody can put a PUD on a piece of property whenever there's, whenever it surrounds other pieces of property and kind of landlocks those. I don't, I'm having a hard time comprehending that.
So the PUD would have to guarantee access to those properties? The plat itself guarantees it on paper, but there would be no obstruction, there could be no obstructions to those properties.
Is that reflected in the revised PUD?
Because of the difficulty of knowing exactly where those properties are on the site and the different, the topography out there, it would be almost, unless you, unless the applicant were to survey every single one of those properties, it would be very difficult for staff to know whether anything on that master plan obstructs those properties, access to those properties, because we would have to have the plat overlaying on the master plan exactly as the lines conform to each other, and then ground-truth that and make sure that there isn't anything in the way of the platted right-of-way leading to the out parcels.
Are any of those pieces of property being used to ride their four-wheelers or whatever they do out there? And how many pieces are there?
I tried to count them. Some of them are so small, but I counted like around 20 pieces, but that may not be entirely accurate, because I was, some of them are just slivers of four, like half, half-pieces of lots that have been sold off without coming through the lot split process or anything like that. And what was your first question?
How many of them were there? And are the, are they being used now, the lots, that's not part of the PUD? I understood you to say that the PUD does not include the lots that, that's not owned by the owner, is that correct?
Correct.
So there are legal descriptions of them?
Correct.
Yeah, so they would need to be surveyed out and?
But whether they're being used currently, I don't know. I know that we have received some comments from citizens that their properties were being used for that verbally, but I don't know, there would, there'd be no way for us to tell unless we had them surveyed, or the applicant or the owners had them surveyed to show us exactly where they are.
Would that be something that could be inserted into the PUD agreement?
I don't believe so, because it really doesn't, you could insert something like, like the bounds of the PUD should be fenced, which I think is in there already. If you wanted to recommend that, that include the boundaries of those parcels, yes, but to require a surveying of those parcels when? to require a surveying of those parcels when those parcels are not owned by the PUD applicant, I don't think would be permissible in the PUD.
But the PUD boundaries would be permissible.
Correct, and so if you approach it in that manner, yes. If the applicant is required to survey, or excuse me, to fence off the boundaries, including the boundaries around those small lots for the purposes of protecting other properties from encroachment, then yes, that's something that could be inserted into the PUD. And I think there is a portion of the PUD that does have a requirement for fencing of the boundaries.
Right. Okay.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Gabriel, is this, I don't know if you use the same terminology as I use, what we would call a paper subdivision?
It is, yes, sir. It's an antiquated subdivision that was never developed.
And the subject lots are all non-buildable?
I haven't done an analysis of that, but I would assume that most of them are not currently buildable because of the sizes and because...
No infrastructure neither.
Never get a septic tank on them. What's that?
There's no infrastructure neither, correct?
No, sir.
So when you say that the applicant... I have a similar piece. Joe's not here today, but Roberts Ranch, I own several pieces inside Roberts Ranch. And they have no problem granting me access to go to my lots if we so choose. We can't use the lots for anything. They're not usable, which these are not usable either. But you mentioned that Skeet basically guarantees if I owned one, say I was one of the owners, he would guarantee my right to be able to get to my property.
It would be a requirement of the owner that currently owns the rights-of-way. And that's another question, because rights-of-way, they're dedicated on the plat, but they were never taken in by the county via deed, so that's kind of a gray area.
Well, in my experience in that field, those right-of-ways, even though they're not there on the ground, they're on paper.
Yeah.
Therefore, as long as I can show you where they are, nobody can stop me from walking down a road that's not there.
That's correct. That would be your legal access for those lots.
And these were obviously way before 1992 when the comp plan was first adopted, so these were grandfathered down as being subpar lots.
Well, I wouldn't use the word grandfathered, but yeah, they were platted, and they would never meet our plating regulations now.
Right, today.
So basically, it's a civil matter between the Magnolia Dunes and them if they are using any of their property for...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Same thing we said last time with the gentleman who came up. That's for the courts to decide, not for us. We can put something in the PUD regarding it, but we can't do anything about their rights.
But if the PUD says that the boundaries of the PUD has to be fenced, then that would make it where that those lots should be fenced, because they're boundaries of the PUD, right? And I just look at it as if I owned a piece of property in there, and I know that people out there don't have a whole lot of money that owned those, and they'd probably love to sell them, probably for a pretty cheap price. But it just seems to me that I would hate no one paying taxes on a piece of property that somebody else is using day-to-day, and they're making money off of using my piece of property, and there's nothing I can do about it. You know, I wouldn't have the money to fight a big guy, if you will, and I'm not saying you're a big guy, but if... I think from our standpoint, we should protect residents, shouldn't we? I mean, somewhat. I know it's a legal matter. I agree with that, but if the PUD says that they need to be fenced, they should be fenced. Asking.
Well, and one of our charges is to protect the public welfare, so that, you know, protect property rights and public welfare, so that's a plausibility, what you're saying there. Any other questions you have of Gabriel at this point, before he moves into the review of the PUD?
To answer your question, Mr. Dantzler, I would agree with that interpretation of the fencing requirement. If the boundaries have to be fenced, then it should include boundaries within the PUD.
So that's something we can add as an amendment when we get to the PUD. All right.
I'll have to look at the PUD language right now to see if it suffices, but if the commission would like to add additional language, that's within your...
From what I understood, you said it was already in there, that the boundaries of the PUD has to be fenced.
That's correct.
Okay, so if it's already a rule, then it's...
Maybe it needs to be clarified a little bit, so it's not ambiguous.
Right.
Okay. Let's move on to the review of the PUD. We'll give Gabriel a chance to check, to shift gears here. And we're on the ordinance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, now let's go through the actual PUD, and not the ordinance. They're basically identical.
Yes, ma'am. The text of the PUD will be in the ordinance.
So it starts on page one of 22. Is that correct?
Just a moment here.
This is the ordinance.
Mine says one of 30.
Okay.
I think you're looking for the Redline version, Susan, or...
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking for the Redline version. I think that's the one we need to look at. So that's the one of 22.
Correct. That's right.
Okay. Proceed, sir. Are we gonna have this on our screens, or you're just gonna walk us through it?
I can walk you through it. I don't know if you can get this pulled up on your screens or not. Do you not have access to your electronic agenda up there?
No, we're looking at the aerial view right now of the map. Jacob, I think your name is being called. Can you help us out? Because some of us don't have our packets. Bear with us, folks. We'll get there.
Somehow we lost eight pages.
Smaller print.
Yeah, you're true.
Plus, there's a lot that's been stricken, so... But that was been added, so I don't know. I hope everybody's enjoying this wonderful weather we're having right now. It's been such a wonderful respite from what we were having.
It is.
If you can make that bigger for us, we'd love it.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, is that big enough, or...
Yes.
Okay.
I think we can all see that now, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Take us through it.
Okay, so the first few changes are simply the addition and subtraction of whereas clauses. So the first subtraction is overflow parking on a parcel that was never permitted to have overflow parking because of a conservation easement. So two whereas clauses have been added at the request of the applicant. They really don't provide much substance other than explaining the reasoning for the PUD zoning, which is the same that's stated in the LDC or similar language. So airboat racing has been removed entirely from the PUD at the request of the applicant. And this part here is simply the justification for the PUD, so we're not to the uses yet. Sections were updated to conform to the new sections on the MUNICODE website. The legal description was updated and removed, and places an exhibit towards the end. Definitions were added. So a number of additional definitions for master plan, all-terrain vehicle, recreational off-road vehicle, vehicle itself, enforcement officer, event, jurisdictional wetlands, mudbogging, which mirrors the language in the Land Development Code. Racing was added as a use, and so it was defined. ATV and UTV riding was also defined to better delineate what ATV and UTV riding are for the purposes of this PUD, and then exhibits were adopted by reference. And so the allowed uses, mudbogging is to be permitted within the so-called pit, and also any other areas designated on the master plan. The only other area would be RPM alley, which is a new area that's introduced into this PUD. It is present on the site now. The all-terrain vehicle and motorcycle riding was not changed, simply the acreage was removed because it was ambiguous. It wasn't really very enforceable in that manner, so it was removed and simply referred to as shown on the master plan. Racing of vehicles was added for two events. That restriction for two events is on the master plan, on the last page of the master plan. I think it's the fourth condition. Campsite and cabin use remains as always, but the same change was made to remove acreage. General agriculture and silviculture use is allowable within the boundaries of the entire PUD. No longer is it restricted simply to 980 acres. Mobile vendors may operate within an area designated on the master plan. Airboat racing was removed. Recreational vehicle parking. The code section was updated there and is limited to areas delineated on the master plan. Artificial ponds were added at the request of the applicant as a use. One restaurant was added at the request of the applicant as a use. The restaurant is currently in place. One camp store was added as a use, and vehicle rentals and repairs is an accessory use to the uses permitted within the PUD in an area delineated on the master plan. Then what follows is conditions on the allowed uses. Bear with me here, because this is gonna be quite intensive trying to explain what was removed and what was added and what was retained. So a clarification was added that riding, racing, and mudbogging of any vehicle within jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms is strictly prohibited. Clarification was added also that ATV and UTV trails and riding will be a minimum of 100 feet from the property lines, and additional protection on the wetlands and lake bottoms was added so that mudbogging could not occur within 100 feet of the jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms, except as exempted below. So in RPM alley, because RPM alley is nestled between two wetlands, we did the very minimum of the wetlands buffer that is required by the Land Development Code, and that's 25. Riding of trucks is prohibited within RPM alley. No new riding areas shall be established anywhere in the PUD within 100 feet of jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms. Okay, so the protections on wetlands and lake bottoms were enhanced. Jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms within 100 feet of an existing riding area shall be, so this is for existing, that already encroach within that 100 feet. The 100 feet is an additional protection that was added, so this is sort of a grandfathering of those areas so that they would not be in violation of the PUD. So those areas shall be clearly labeled with signage and protected along the required setback with barriers consisting of any of the following components: fully opaque vegetative screening consisting of existing vegetation and/or planted landscaping, and field and/or vinyl fences. Barriers are required to measure a minimum consistent height of no less than four feet and shall be approved by Planning and Development Services prior to installation. Jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms greater than 100 feet of a riding area shall be labeled with signage, but the described barriers shall not be required to be installed. Signage verbiage shall state a prohibition of any riding activity within jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms. In lieu of the required barriers, and this was added at the request of the applicant, the owner may annually submit monitoring reports submitted to the St. John's River Water Management District for review by Planning and Development Services to ensure that additional impacts to jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms have not occurred where not permitted by the St. John's River Water Management District. That word "property" should not be there. Okay, so an old restriction on ATV and UTV riding, that it be at least 25 feet, was removed because it was enhanced to 100 feet. And just a note on the option above for the protection, staff believes that if we receive an annual report at the same time each year, and it does not show any additional impacts, and so St. John's River Water Management District has monitoring stations out there now. And if we don't show any impacts, then we know that the barriers are not required. If there are impacts, then the barriers would be required.
Would that be a codes violation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Motorcycle-engaged racing, so we included this within the wetland and lake bottom setbacks applicable to ATV and UTV areas in subsection B above. And motorcycle-engaged racing shall not start before 8:00 a.m. and shall cease no later than 5:30 p.m. Building setbacks from all abutting property lines. So the setbacks were, the side and rear setbacks were increased to 100 to conform to the front setback requirement, so it was formerly 50. However, we did add another provision to per se grandfather existing structures, so the setbacks shall be applicable to structures and buildings placed on the property after the enactment of the present ordinance. Existing, properly permitted structures and buildings in place at the time of enactment may continue to abide by the former 50-foot side and rear setbacks, just so that those existing structures would not be subject to a violation. Okay, racing as allowed herein shall consist only of races between similar vehicles, such as a race con... as a race consisting of all ATV, UTV vehicles, or a race consisting of all motorcycles. Racing between different vehicles is prohibited, so a truck cannot compete against an ATV or a motorcycle against a truck for safety reasons. Clarification was added that any activity prohibited by a local, state, or federal agency having jurisdiction is expressly disallowed in this PUD. The prohibition on dogs was removed. Most recre, rural recreational sites have dogs that are brought to them. Staff could see really no public benefit to prohibiting dogs.
Is there a requirement how the dogs have to be managed?
There is not, no ma'am. And staff had contemplated that, but the difficulty of enforcement of that would be just too much for, for what would be occurring during weekends and. Okay, an outdated reference was stricken. There was an incorrect reference to a landscape buffer in this, in section eight that was changed to perimeter landscaping, which is what's required around a vehicle use area. The number of events has stayed the same and the time of events has stayed the same, 8:00 PM on Friday through 8:00 PM on Sunday. The part that was stricken on number 10 is simply, was simply moved to another part, so ATV and UTV riding is regulated in another portion that we'll get to in just a moment. Mud bogging and racing, so racing was added to number 11 as an allowed use, shall only be allowed during a Saturday or a Sunday during an event within the areas designated on the master plan. And mud bogging and racing shall not commence prior to 9:30 AM and not extend beyond 5:30 PM. Again, airboat racing conditions were removed. ATV and UTV riding shall be allowed every day of the year as it was previously. ATV and UTV riding shall not commence before 8:00 AM and not extend beyond 8:00 PM. With the exception that during an event, ATV and UTV riding shall be permitted for the duration of the event, as stipulated in subsection 10 above. 13, this was merely clarified, but the essence of the sound level regulation remains the same as previous. 14 is a restatement of what was stated previously in the PUD regarding staffing of fire and/or EMS and law enforcement personnel at events, but the language has been, been made clearer. Number 16 stricken and simply moved above where ATV and UTV riding is regulated. 19 was stricken as well. That we could, staff did not really see any purpose to fencing the mud bogging area. Given that the mud bogging area has to be in mud and the area is clearly delineated by the mud, so a fence might lead to more public safety issues where somebody gets caught on the fence and. Okay, so in number 17, the overflow parking provision was stricken again because the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services has a conservation easement on that land and they do not permit any kind of activity on that land other than agriculture and passive uses. 19 states that there will be two access points permitted for the development, meeting the standards of the code. Each providing ingress and egress entrances to the PUD as designated on the master plan. A driveway permit for each access shall be obtained. 20 is just a clarification of language. 20A, and there was a recent conversation about this between staff and the applicant. It's possible that the 168 will be changing, but the applicant had previously requested to increase the number of 24-foot wide camper and recreational vehicle overnight parking spaces to 168 from the 29 allowed to be included within the total 250 campsites allowed. So these spaces are to have electrical and water hookups and the first 29 spaces will not be required to be connected to the central sanitary sewer system, simply to grandfather or to respect what was allowed for the first 29.
Will the others have connection to sanitary sewer?
Under this writing, yes ma'am.
Good.
They would.
Okay.
A maximum of 250 campsites within the area designated on, as camping areas are allowed. The rest has not changed there. The camping area will be separate from the vehicle parking area. This was already contained within the PUD, but a clarification was added that camping and overnight stays of any kind is expressly prohibited in the vehicle parking areas. So camping areas are regulated by the LDC and they have a minimum dimension, a dimensional standard and access standards, and so placing campers or RVs in a parking lot is not an efficient or an orderly way of organizing a, an RV park for safety purposes and for access purposes. This was, G on page 12 was added to clarify that camping and recreational vehicle areas shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the regulations for overnight recreational vehicle parks in LDC section 45-196 and for primitive camping, for the primitive camping areas in LDC 45-197. Compliance will be demonstrated on the site development plans submitted for development review and prior to issuance of a final development order. The final development order is what is issued once all conditions and revisions are made to the site development plans as requested by the Development Review Committee. Number 24, this was also addition of language. It states the same thing, but it's clarifying what the requirements are prior to commencement of use, and I'll read through that. A specific land use and/or development permitted under this ordinance shall not commence prior to issuance of a final development order pursuant to development plan review as required by the LDC. Final technical review, which is issuance of a construction permit by the Building Division and approval of all applicable local and state departments and agencies. During development review, issuance of a final development order may be conditioned upon construction of facility improvements such as public roadway improvements concurrent with the development needs and impacts. Any such improvement shall be required to be shown on the final site development plans prior to issuance of a final development order and shall be constructed at the expense of the owner of the PUD. All of that is contained within the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Failure to comply with this section shall result in suspension of the events allowed herein until compliance is conclusively demonstrated by the owner. A regulation on vehicle rentals and repairs was added since that was an added use and those shall be limited to events as allowed herein. I believe the applicant will be proposing a slight change to this, which staff would not be opposed to, to allow vehicle rentals every day of the year, but repairs would remain only limited to events. Staff has no problem with that. The storage disposal and spillage of oil and other hazardous substances is strictly prohibited on the site. Oil and other hazardous substances shall be properly contained and disposed of, as stipulated by the Putnam County Code of Ordinances, State Statute and Regulations, and Federal Law and Regulations. We're almost at the end. C, expansion of the boundaries of this PUD, so this was added simply to clarify that lands that are not presently zoned PUD and were not sub, or part of this application may not be used for the PUD uses. So including incorporation of lands entirely surrounded by the PUD shall be processed as an amendment to the PUD prior to the use of those lands for activities herein permitted. Such amendment shall include a revision to the approved master plan, clearly designating activities permitted within lands to be incorporated into the PUD. D, the Department of Planning and Development Services, the Fire Marshal, that's misspelled there, but we'll correct that, and PCSO, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, shall be allowed to inspect the PUD site for compliance with the provisions of this order at any time the facility is open to the general public upon request and acceptance by the owner and as allowed by local and state law. E, in the event of a Land Development Code violation within the PUD, the county may initiate Land Development Code violation proceedings and bring violations before the special magistrate. If the applicant violates conditions of the PUD ordinance or any permits from any county, state, or federal agency, the Board of County Commissioners may, in accordance with due process, schedule the project for public hearing for consideration of revocation of the PUD. And F, in the case that the exhibits adopted by reference may conflict with the provisions of the PUD ordinance, the ordinance shall prevail and govern in all respects. So in case there's something that staff missed on the master plan that does not exactly conform to the PUD ordinance, the ordinance always prevails.
Okay.
And this concludes my review of the.
Questions of Mr. Quintez?
I have a couple of things that I think are conflicting in here. I've just got to get to them now. I think that racing thing.
Give us the page number.
I don't know where it is. I think it's only mentioned on the master plan that it is limited to two weekends, two events, but it's not in the ordinance, so with that last thing saying the ordinance controls, I think that should be added.
That racing, there will only be two racing events per year?
Right, or however many there, there are that we approved before.
Those two motorcycle racings, I think.
Right, right, motorcycle. That was, it's on the, it's on one of these pages.
That's one of the red lines on it.
It's on page four of the master plan and a note.
Right.
It says motorcycle racing is allowed during two events of any year. It's tiny print, so I'm blind anywhere, so I just think that should be incorporated in the language of the.
The PUD.
The ordinance.
Okay.
And on page 12 of 22.
And I'm sorry, can you, would you mind giving me the, the page number of the first?
It's not, it's on page four of the master plan, but it's not specifically in the ordinance, I don't believe, unless it's there and I'm just not seeing it.
Oh, no ma'am.
About the motorcycle racing.
Right, it's, it's not in there, so I'll make a note here and if there's, if it makes it into the motion of the commission, then we can make that change. Now, how we'll present this is, we'll present this as one version that the commission recommended and then staff's version, because staff's version can't change at this point.
Right.
Right. We understand that. Other questions of Mr. Quintez?
On page 12 of 22, I believe it's section 20, B and G, on B it says that there's no streets, roads leading to the camping area and within the camping area are not required to be paved, but then down in G it says that it is to be reviewed by Development Review. So I think those conflict, I don't know, I think Development Review may have say so over that, but.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a few. But I'm not sure these are, these are more probably. I, I know that one of the provisions is the, the road maintenance or making sure the road doesn't degrade in the area of the, the development. One of the things that concerned me when I went out there is that the driveway to, I believe, the west, to the right leaving the property seems to really have been developed without people staying on the pavement. You've got a lot of loose sand that seems to be being driven over and a little driveway has been created. Is that something we can add to have that paved by the owner so that that access or that egress would be more stable?
For the, the driveway apron?
Yes.
Yes ma'am, that's something that the Planning Commission can add. I'll look for the section that addresses. It's 19 on page 12, so that's something that we would add there, that the, both of the access points shall have paved aprons.
Okay. Because I noticed if that were, if it were wet, that would be another place for people to play. If you do on my road when it rains real hard. Okay. At this point, Mr. Alfred, you and your attorney are welcome to come forward and speak with us and then take questions from us. Notice how I said you're welcome to take questions from us? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Catherine Whittington. My address is 236 San Marco Avenue in St. Augustine, Florida, 32084. I'm here representing the owner, applicant, which is Magnolia Dunes LLC. With me here today, as you've seen, is Charles Alfred, also known as Skeet Alfred, and Ryan Carter with Carter Environmental Services, the project's environmental consultant who worked on the St. John's River Water Management District permitting for the project, which has been issued, the permit is now issued. I want to say that Mr. Quintez did a great job on the staff report and his presentation and going through that very tedious change, red line, and in, he and his staff in helping us work through the many issues that we have resolved. The things that needed to be clarified and cleaned up and, and changed during this PUD, which you can tell by the red line, was not easy. Just by way of background, some of you may already know this and you may not. This, this PUD and the Magnolia Dunes PUD, also known as Hogwaller, was originally, came about because Commissioner Ed Taylor back in 2007, while he was on the board, approached Skeet and asked him to consider using some of his land for a mud bog and trail riding area in an effort to reduce widespread illegal and unregulated mud bogging and riding that was occurring all over the county in rural areas. And so he agreed and he created and constructed the park. It has since grown and evolved into what it is today, which is a hybrid mud bog, trail riding, and campground. Sports, it's a sports entertainment event and a campground, so thus why there are so many conditions and issues that have to be addressed. And so this amendment was necessary in order to clean everything up and, and make everything clear what's allowed and what the conditions are. We did find some additional things since the staff report, the text that Gabriel just went through. There were basically three of them and I have brought a red line that shows those, those three changes and Skeet's going to pass them out to you, but I'm going to walk you through them.
Give us a chance to get them, okay? Thank you, sir. Third copy. What page are we going to be on?
I'm going to tell you which pages as I walk you through them, if that's okay. Does everybody have them now? Okay, the, Gabriel, I've discussed these with, with Mr. Quintez and emailed him the same thing that you received.
I was going to say, can you provide it electronically for the record?
I did, yes.
Thank you.
So the first change is on page four, and you'll see it in redlining, and this is some of the language that Gabriel just went over. Mud bogging, is everybody with me on page four, top of page four? Mud bogging as defined herein within the pit and we've made it clear RPM alley rather than areas designated. Those are the two areas where mud bogging is allowed. In number two, we've made it clear that ATV, UTV, and motorcycle racing shall not be considered mud bogging, which is regulated as separate use under this ordinance. So mud bogging is defined, trail riding is different than mud bogging, and it's allowed anywhere in an upland. anywhere in an upland, not, is specifically prohibited in wetlands, but anywhere that is in an upland, even though standing water or mud might exist, because that is an occurrence that happens all the time, in uplands. But that is not to be construed as mud bogging. Okay, the next one is on page seven. At the bottom, Gabriel mentioned this, that there might be a change. It said, in your version, the staff report version, it said 168, which was changed from 29. At the time, and during the last adoption of this ordinance, there were 29 that have water and electric hookups. Now there are 56. He does, he has a state, camping is licensed by the State of Florida Department of Health, and he has a, a State of Florida Department of Health license for 168, which is why he started asking for that number. But when we drilled down into it, we realized he doesn't need 168 plus 250. What he needs is the 59 that right now are there, and they have the hookups to water and electric.
Of the 29?
Of the, there are 56.
There are 56, but there are 21 there now.
No, there's 56.
There's 56 there now?
And one of the reasons we needed to amend this, to clean this up.
Okay.
He had too many that were in this PUD, so, but they are in his license. So we've changed the 168 to 56 and struck the language that said, on the next page, page eight, at the top, the first, it says the first 29 units will not be required to connect to central sanitary system. That's also been changed to 56. He has, the State of Florida doesn't require that. He has a, if you need more details on this, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm a layperson on this issue, but he has a treatment facility, and they have dump stations, I think there are two of them.
Two.
Two of them, and each, each RV utilizes the dump stations. And then he also has a water filling area that they use for, you know, if they need additional water. But, but the 250 in the next paragraph include tents, pop-up campers, RVs, that are called dry camping. Some, some people call it primitive camping, but it actually means they're self-contained. And so he didn't need to specifically say 168 because that 250 encompassed him. So it matched, it's fine with his, he couldn't go over 168 without the Department of Health revising his license. But the PUD allows 250, because it did, it always did. So if he did add any more, he'd have to go to DRC if, you know, if he added any more of the, of the campsites.
Of the dry campsites.
Right. Or even the connected ones, he'd have to go to DRC. It'd go through Development Review.
And your permit from the Department of Health is for all 168 sites?
Correct.
Okay.
Then the last change is on page nine, and Gabriel mentioned it, it's item 26, vehicle repairs, it did say, and rentals are limited to events. He, he rents just a few AT, ATV, UTVs every day, but not, doesn't need the repairs every day. So that's just limited to during the events, but rentals is allowable every day. So those are the changes that I've, I've shown you. To answer some of the questions, I think the, the first one we came upon, questions of staff, have to do with those slivers. They're, they are .07 acre or less, there's portions, parcels of lots, they're not buildable, there, there is no infrastructure, and the, the text required the PUD, the entire PUD to be fenced. It did not specifically ask for those small little slivers to be fenced, and frankly, for him, it would, it would be very difficult for him to do that. Where are they? They could be located on GIS and, and known where they are. Most of them, there's only about 20 to 25. Most of them are in the wetlands where everything's prohibited anyway. So they're not being used, obviously, if they're in the wetlands. About access to them came up. They do have legal access by the, by the plat. They also have physical access, and he guarantees that. So they can, at any time they want to, come in and visit their sliver, wave, do whatever they want to do on that sliver, but there's nothing that they can do with those sliver. And he has approached the owners, and he's bought several of them. Some of them just, they don't want to sell it, they, it's a piece of property they want to keep. But, and I think the question of taxes being paid on them, they're beneath all the level for where taxes would be due.
There's no taxes?
There's no tax, so they're not paying taxes on them. I mean, if I owned it, I'd certainly sell it. I'd rather get some money than, than nothing, but that's their business. Then, let me see. The next one to come up, the two racing events during the year that, that through the chair, Ms. Fortner brought up, and we're happy to put that into the text between now and BCC. The, the chair person, chair madam, chair, brought up where you're leaving the, the property to the right, I think you said, and they're cutting a rut, that you would like to see that improved, paved, alternat, which, that's one alternative, but another alternative would be, he stops it from happening, blocks it off, so they can't come off that pavement. So we would ask that that be added to that condition. And let me see if I missed anything. Yeah.
What happens...
Give your name and address.
Yeah, Mike Skeet, Alfred, 275 Round Lake Road, Palatka, Florida. What happens there, that is, a lot of what you're seeing is from the school bus. If you look across the road, the school bus turns around at that, at my driveway, coming from Interlockin Elementary. If you look across the road, she swings out way over there, I can take you there right now, the school bus is the one who keeps the, keeps the, yes, my folks cut it off, but we're not there enough, we only use it like on big weekends, and we, we are, we don't have a problem expanding the driveway over, which we try to do. But if you go and look right there, I can take you there this afternoon, you will find out where the school bus is, the person who turns around there and uses that.
But you can stop that.
I, well, I'm trying to work with the school bus. The school bus has to turn around there, and that's the safest place. We have the biggest driveway, because that's the only place, really, she would have to go all the way to Highway 19 to turn around.
Sounds like a good deed could be done there.
Well, yeah, we, well, we, we're, I mean, school bus can turn, it's a public road, she can turn around anywhere she wants, but that's what, a lot of what you're seeing, that dirt there, is a school bus turns around there, and she cuts that corner. I, I don't know if I, I hate to ask her to stop what she's doing, because she's just trying to be safe, because she's trying to protect kids, and so I understand, so. But we, we don't have a problem expanding the, the...
The apron.
The apron as much as we can.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think I, did anybody have any other questions that I didn't already cover?
I have one question.
I think we probably do.
Okay.
You were, you were talking, I guess it's page four, about motorcycles. You're not referencing the two races that you're allowed to have.
The, the reference to the races, the two, which was just, we agreed with the Planning Department just recently, that there, we would use two of the events for, of the 24, is on the note?
Okay, but this here...
It's not in here, but...
Riding a motorcycle you can do every day?
Yes.
Okay.
But the races are now going to be events. And we're, we're happy to put that into the text.
Anything else from anybody else?
On, I have a note here, I don't know, between the master plan and Exhibit E, which is the hand-drawn map, I think?
Exhibit, oh, the campsite map?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't remember what, I just said it.
It's, looks like this.
Yeah, I just got to find it.
That is the, staff requested this, and it correlates with his Department of Health license.
Right, so I saw all those blue buck, blue barrels when I was out there.
Blue.
Representing each site, basically?
Blue barrels, did you say?
Trash barrels, it looked like.
Trash barrels, oh.
About a thousand of them.
What's the question?
Those blue barrels, or those, like, representing each site?
Right. Every, there are, we have 320, over 320 trash cans on the whole place. Each campsite gets, yeah, so we, when we, all the hookup sites all have their own trash can, and plus, there are over 300, I have more trash cans than anybody in Putnam County, I promise you right now.
Got a lot of blue rain barrels, that's for sure. Anything else?
I have a question back on the slivers. Whenever we came before here last time, there was a gentleman that came and brought a picture of what he had, you know, a year prior, and then he came and said, well, here's what my property looks like today. And he wasn't happy about it. And my understanding at that time, he was saying that it would be nice if he offered me a little something or something for it, and, and that wasn't, the understanding I had, he would, he would be glad to sell it to you, but you weren't willing to buy it.
It could be one of the ones that they have purchased since then, but he, he can answer that.
I can answer. That gentleman actually has fenced his off. He wants $10,000 for his .07 acres. That comes out to about over $184,000 an acre for his. I, I'm glad, I've made him offers, very reasonable offers. I'm paying well over, to be honest with you, some of the last ones we bought, I'm paying, you know, 40 or $50,000 an acre for this property that's, I'm paying well over market value. If he wants 10,000, I just refuse to buy it.
Well, 10,000 for one would turn into 20 for the next, and 30 for the next.
So, so if he, excuse me, if he, if he fenced it in, do you have to stay 100 feet away from that, from your riding? You can ride up right to it, or the way I understood the PUD is, is that you had to stay 100 feet away from property lines?
It's a property line.
Property lines, yeah, that's a good point. I don't know, I hadn't considered that.
That's, um...
You should be staying 100 feet away from property lines.
You should be staying 100 feet away from it, if that's the case. I mean, I'm, I'm just, that's what the PUD says.
The 100 feet, we should look at that language. The 100 feet is from wetlands, but let's look at the language on the property lines.
Madam Chair, may I, may I address that?
Sir, Gabriel, yes.
Yes, Gabriel, please do.
The building setbacks, yes, from all abutting property lines, including anything contained within, so...
It's 100 feet?
From a building.
That's for building setbacks.
Any property lines, including anything contained within.
Now, there are riding setbacks that would be applicable if, so some riding setbacks, like motorcycle-engaged racing, maintain, shall maintain a minimum distance of 325 feet from the property line of any adjacent property on which there is a residential structure. None of those have residential structures, so...
Right, so it'd be...
But there is a riding setback somewhere in here.
I thought I read 100 feet is what I was thinking.
I thought I did, too.
Yeah, so the designated mud bogging in ATV, UTV trails and riding areas shall be a minimum of 100 feet from property lines. It's the same for the jurisdictional wetlands and lake bottoms, so that's, yeah, so it, it does apply to the riding, the setbacks.
Where exactly is that fenced-in area?
Yeah, do you know?
Yes, I do. It's actually up in the, in, in the middle of some of the camping areas, and I don't know, and Mr. Danzler, I don't, I can't think of any other place in the world where there's a setback for me using property next to your property if I own a lot.
Setback for riding, though, we've gone over this many times.
Okay, well, they don't ride there. I mean, we can make sure they don't ride there, but it's still, I, I just don't, what you want me to do.
So this site that is fenced in...
Saying what the PUD said, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying what the PUD...
Well, this, the intent of this, and I think it's on page four, item B, a minimum of 100 feet from the, the intent was exterior property lines is what that was, should have been. But as I said, this PUD was written a long time ago, and it had a lot of problems.
Oh, yeah. All right, so I want to make this, I want to understand this clearly. That piece of fenced-in area is sitting in the middle of your camping area?
In one of the camping areas, yes.
What's the dimensions on that sliver?
25 foot wide by 125 foot long.
Gosh.
You can't build on it, you can't do anything with it. I've offered the man way more than it's worth, and we've tried to buy it, we've tried to buy it every so often. I, someone just wants to be...
If he wants a lot of money for it, then it should be taxed.
Well, you know?
That's the way I would look at it.
Well, he would be if he paid it.
He said it was taxed.
If I owned it, it would be, because it's in an area that is taxed.
Whenever he was here, he said he did pay taxes on it, and I think he, that's what I understood, he said he paid 12, $15 a year or something, which isn't much.
I can offer a clarification on that point, Madam Chair, if I may. There are some slivers out there, some of the larger ones are taxed, so I don't know how much they are, but I, I did pull up a property bill, or tax bill on one of them just recently, so...
If, if they own like two or three together, you know, but almost all those are in the wetlands where they own two or three. We've bought the ones that were in the RPM alley, we bought all those, and this one is the only one in an upland. Well, there's some others in uplands, but they're way up on the other hill, but most of them are in the wetlands. We have tried to buy it, we, we are still diligently trying to buy it. We buy them every few months, we pick them up, but they, people have to be reasonable, there's a lot of them.
Are, are you using them, though?
Do you understand the history?
Are you using, are you using the lots in your, in your venture here?
Who would know? Not the one that's fenced off, no, sir. But what, the, just a real quick history on it, I don't know if you, it's called Kennelworth subdivision. It was a, a land scheme before the turn of the century, before the last century.
Yeah, I'm aware, yeah.
And they sold you a lot in 25 by 125, then you got 10 acres somewhere to farm, for your farm, which was way off in, in the hinterlands, you know what I'm saying? And so this is a, only a plat, it's never been anything built on it, so, I mean, it's, we were trying to buy them, I, to survey it. It's, it's only available by a paper plat, you know, there's no surveying, ever been done on it.
In 1,100 acres.
In, yes, and it's a whole section, it was a whole section.
Right. The overlay shows it.
Yeah, you would have to, I don't know. You're talking about surveying, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
They're not talking about surveying, it could be GIS.
Could be geolocated. It could be geolocated.
It'd be $100,000 to survey those.
Well, you've got to find, you've got to find a benchmark.
I can't believe it would be $100,000 to survey 20 lots.
In a section? Yes, sir. In a whole section?
I bet you're, I bet it's close to that.
A mile by mile.
That's a big piece of property you've got to survey.
It's a big piece of property.
Yeah.
Okay, let's kind of move on from that.
I, I do have one comment on that. I do kind of think it's unreasonable to be 100 feet from these little lots for riding. I think that's kind of unreasonable of the, I would interpret it to be the exterior as well, but I, I just wanted to say that for the record.
I think that was the intent when they did it.
Right.
So I think that's probably what we should probably endorse.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from any of y'all? I have a list. All right. When I was out there two years ago, you had something called the Thousand Acre Woods.
Sorry, the Thousand Acre what?
Woods.
Woods.
Now, is that what is now RPM alley?
No.
All right, where's the Thousand Acre Woods?
Thousand Acre Woods is just a sign we put up that if you, it's a thousand acres, you know, when you go north of the, it's when you leave the camping area, the common area, it's a thousand acres out there.
So, are there no trails or anything?
It's just trails, it's just open woods.
Okay, all right.
There's no particular, it's just a thousand, it's, my media guy thought it was kind of cute from Peter Rep, you know, from...
Right, right. Do you require reservations, or is it reservation and/or drive-up?
It's reservation.
And both.
It's both, okay. Now, do you have EMS and law enforcement out there during heavy weekend usage that's not an event?
Yes, we, we have, Putnam County Sheriff's Office is there for every event, what we call the 24-hour things, they're there 24, 7. They're there at the start and to the end. And so the EMS, we are working with them on how to staff it with them right now. Right now, I have a, a first responder that, we have our own cart, and we take care of whoever, whatever medical issues there are.
So they're there just on event weekends?
On event weekends, yes.
Your first responder?
He's there every weekend, but...
Every weekend.
Every weekend, but event weekends...
But EMS and the, the...
The sheriff's office is only there on the event weekends.
Okay. Do you allow any kind of latrines or personal sanitary facilities at all in your, okay, good. Are generators allowed in the primitive camping area? Is there a time when, pardon?
I wanted to honor, you know, I just want to say, I was nodding my head, but yes, ma'am, generators are allowed.
All right. Now, is there a... Now, is there a time constraint on those, that they can't be used after a certain time of day?
No, ma'am.
So they could run all night if they wanted to?
Correct.
Is that being a good neighbor?
It is in our campground. I don't underst... I say I don't. Here's... The... What we have there is not a true campground in this...
Right.
It's not where you come and bring your... You come to ride. It's normal activity. Most... We are probably the largest mud bog, or we call it... I don't even call it a mud bog anymore. Campground RPA TV resort. We're the largest one probably in the southeast right now. And we... It's just the nature of the business. People come... They're used to going to places where there's nothing. They're just an open field. They open up their property. People open up their property, and they come and ride, and they do whatever. We probably have more facilities. We have two bath houses. I have more bath houses than anywhere in northeast Florida right now. We have two large bath houses, and that's why we have been successful, because when people go to camp, they like to know that they can go take a hot shower and be clean. So they... That's why we've been successful.
You've got all of those amenities on site that people can use.
Correct.
So I'm going to think very seriously about asking that we add to the PUD that generators can only be used, you know, cannot be used from like 11:00 PM until 8:00 AM. I know people want to have air conditioners and all of that, but you've also got a lot of noise being generated by that.
We've never had a complaint, ever, about generators.
Most of your new generators are quiet. I would think that would be an unreasonable thing to do myself.
You don't?
I think it would be unreasonable to ask people to not run the generator between a certain hours. I mean, it's...
Just going through my little list here.
I mean...
Now, on your master plan... No, on the maps that we have that were done by, I believe, your environmental people, the wetlands map, you show trails into those jurisdictional wetlands.
Are you... So are you on exhibit G?
Let's see where I am. I'll have to find it.
I think it's the very last one.
Yes, exhibit D, I believe, or no? Keep going. Okay, got it. You've got a lot... Page 30 is your mitigation. Page 29, I think, is... Or the one before it.
I think where you're seeing the trails is on exhibit...
F.
F. O. O, F.
That's correct.
There are a lot of trails being shown back in those jurisdictional wetlands.
If you look on exhibit G, and the title of it is mitigated wetlands map, the... And I can call Ryan Carter up here if I need to, but he and the water management district rode the property, and they identified where trails were encroaching into wetlands, and they mitigated for them. So now they're permitted impact areas. So that's what you're seeing.
So what was the purpose of exhibit F?
It shows you where those impacts are.
Okay, so that's where the impacts are that have been mitigated?
Correct. And so if they have not been mitigated and they're not permitted, there are not... No trails allowed. There's no riding allowed. And this PUD is very specific about that.
The last question I have for you all, you've got a lot of land, substantial amount of land. Why are we... Why are you needing to have riding in the woods that are on the residential side of your property? You've got a lot of land where people can ride around in those thousand-acre woods. Why can't riding be restricted on your adjacent to property that is occupied with residential dwellings?
First, and I will let him address this, too, but it is... It has a much wider setback. I think it's... Is it 325 or 350?
For racing.
Well, that's... I'm not talking about racing. I'm just talking about riding around out in the woods, anything, using a vehicle close to a boundary that abuts residential property.
I think it has a higher setback, but it also has a berm.
It has a berm.
Yes. So 100...
It's 320...
I think it was 100 we did last...
Racing.
It's for motorcycle riding, it's 325 feet for all the...
She's talking about general riding.
I'm talking about general ri... Any riding, period. What is the need to use that small, basically compared to your overall land? What is the need to use that small area that abuts a residential area?
Right now, the setback, we added the berm, and we've set back 75 feet from the property line.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
But my question is, why do you need to have riding in that area that is close to your campground and that abuts that residential area? Why can't that small area be eliminated as riding area?
I guess, how far is enough, what I'm getting at? I mean, we set back 75 feet, what I'm getting at. If you keep, you know...
I'm just asking you upfront.
Right. I think it's... We need it, because most of that... All that riding area is on the hill.
Right.
We are trying to discourage folks. We... That's why we're putting up signage. Part of the agreement now is the signage where people don't ride in the wet areas.
Right.
And we just... So that is the highest property, you know? It's where people come riding. It's not the area where they're making the noise. I mean, it's just... They're just riding through there, so I don't know.
I'm just asking that question, because that's a small portion of your overall acreage.
But that's part of the appeal of the place, so they do have areas to ride. I mean, I... It's just a matter of opinion, I guess, and it's yours and mine, and I think it's appropriate there. I think we've set back far enough to... With the berm and everything, to address it.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
And also, by time, it's limited by time.
It is limited by time. I realize that.
Have we had any complaints about the operation, the way you're conducting it right now?
Yes.
About noise?
Sir?
Okay.
All right, we're going to wrap this up. Any other questions of SKEET or Ms. Whittington? And then we're going to move on to public comments.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Your berm that you mentioned on the property on the side where the residents live, how high is that?
12 feet.
12 feet?
Yes, sir. It's more than just a little berm. It's 12 feet at least.
Do you still have complaints after a 12-foot berm?
Yes, sir. I think we will always... I think, yes, you always will.
Are they complaining about noise?
There are trees actually on top of the berm now. The berm's been there for four or five years now. There are actually trees and bushes growing on the berm. Before, it was just earthen. Now, we've let it grow, so it's actually doing more and more as it's... Time has got, you know, pretty good trees growing on it now and really big bushes, so it's really substantial now.
And he is required to comply with the noise ordinance, the county's noise ordinance is in this PUD.
Right, the noise ordinance is for amplified sound, I believe.
Right, right, right. So there can't be blaring music there.
Yeah, but that doesn't count for the noise of the motorcycles with no mufflers on them.
Right, that's what the mitigation of the berm was for, and the setback, which I thought was 100, but you're saying 75.
75. I don't... Did you change?
I thought you changed it to 100, and the berm had to be 75.
The setback for riding?
On the residential side over there, it's 100.
That's what I thought.
It was changed to 100 from 50.
And just...
That's inside the berm.
Other words, there's a 75-foot berm. He's asking for it to go to 100, which I'll increase it 25 feet. I just have to move a fence, another fence.
Okay, and that's inside the berm? That 100 feet is inside the berm?
The berm is contained within the setback.
Pardon?
The berm would be contained within the setback.
Okay, all right.
So the width of the berm is probably 50 feet if it's a 12-foot-high berm without have slopes on it.
Likely.
So you're only 25 feet away from the berm, or maybe 50 feet away from the berm.
You're roughly around 70 or 60.
Which is like being right there.
Yeah. Actually, the berm is on the property line, and it's pretty wide, and then there's a hole.
You say it's like 50 feet wide at the base of it?
No, that's not... No, sir, it's not that wide. It was pretty stable soil when we put it there, and it doesn't erode, because it's... It's on the high hill, so you don't get erosion like you do in low areas and anything.
Okay.
I do have a question. Where do you think the second entrance needs to go?
We've already pulled the permit for the second entrance. It goes on the very east end, at the very east corner. We've already pulled the driveway permit. I just haven't done it yet, because I want to get through... I didn't want to go build a driveway until...
Good idea.
Until I had permit, you know, strict... But I've pulled the permit several months ago, so the permit's already pulled to replace it, because I have to do a improved entrance there.
Are there any of the... Sorry.
I'm sorry. It is quite a distance from the current entrance.
Yes, it's to the complete east corner of the property.
Right, the east boundary, okay.
Are there any of those sliver pieces of property at that entrance that you're going to be taking out?
No, sir. That... There's a big piece of property on the south end of the property that is not part of that Kennelworth subdivision. All that is kind of in the middle. None of those are near the edge.
So what you're calling east is what you would first approach coming from Palatka?
Correct.
The only other thing with... I know you have a lot of traffic on event weekends and on weekends with people waiting to check in and come through the gate. I would wonder if DRC is going to consider any kind of ingress egress lanes.
Like center turn lanes on the county road?
Either center turn lane or a side turn lane, yes.
We are aware of issues with the level of service on that county road, and the DRC, mainly Public Works, but with planning, would... If... So there's a possibility of requiring a traffic study, or if it's proven in some other way, the traffic study would prove it, that there are issues during events where the level of service drops from a D to either an E or an F, which is below our adopted level of service. So a center-left turn lane or some other improvement, as determined by Public Works, would be required by the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code.
Right, so we could require a traffic study.
Yes, ma'am, through the DRC. That's... It's already within the language of the Land Development Code, so the Public Works Department or Planning would require it at the preliminary stage of the development review.
At the DRC planning stage, okay.
Can I say something about that?
Yes, sir.
That's why we needed the second entrance on those large events that cut out all the...
Okay.
It's when we have only one entrance is then when we would get the traffic, when you have the second entrance. We use a second entrance only when we need it. You understand? It's not a...
Okay.
It's just when we have large events, when we know on Saturday morning, and then after that, you never need it again.
Also, they have changed their procedures to require... They have to reserve, make reservation before they get there. So people aren't just queuing, you know, trying to... Don't you require reservations?
What we do now, we actually sell a limited number of tickets. We got surprised at an event in April where we had traffic unbelie... We were actually turning people away. We had so many people show up. So what we did from then on, when we know we have a big weekend, like Thanksgiving's coming up, we only sell so many vehicle passes. People is not our problem. It's vehicles, parking vehicles. So what we do, we only sell a limited number of vehicle passes that we know we can park adequately. After that, there's... The doors closed. You can't get in.
That's only on event weekends?
On the large event weekends, yes, ma'am. There's no other time where the traffic is out there. It's just on those large event weekends, when the Thanksgiving, the Super Bowl, and maybe Memorial Day. Other than that, you really don't get anything on the road.
Okay. Okay, at this point, thank you very much. You'll have a chance to come back up for about five minutes to respond to any questions that might come up from our one person who has waited very patiently for the last hour and 45 minutes, Cynthia Locke, please come forward. And I've asked Ms. Locke to hold her questions to 10 minutes... Hold her comments to 10 minutes.
Okay, I'm Cindy Locke, and I live on Red Fox... I'm on Red Fox Road, on Rodman Lane, 109 Rodman Lane. I've been living out there for, good God, forever. We've been living around this PUD ever since it evolved, and from the beginning, we're still dealing with it. And regarding this gentleman's question about the parcels out there, my understanding back in the day when Mr. Brown was there, there were over 85 parcels out there that the owner did not have complete control over. So I don't know where the 26 comes from, if there's more. If there's more, we should find out, because in my opinion, they should be fenced off from this PUD so that the vehicle use in the PUD doesn't... They don't ride on these parcels that are owned by these other parcel owners. Those parcels are of value, apparently to Mr. Alford, and I think they probably have increased in value. If I owned a lot out there, you could put a generator and sell ice, or you could build a tiny house, or you could do whatever you wanted to on it and make money off your lot from his business, I guess. I guess that would be permissible. I don't know, but to me, the land is valuable to the person who owns it, and it should And it should be fenced off from this parcel, this PUD. And because apparently it's valuable at this point to him. Apparently he doesn't want to pay $10,000 for it, but I would put 30 on mine just to aggravate him. But anyhow, besides that, in regards to the setback buffers, what I'm asking this commission board to reconsider rezoning to PUD 500 feet on that west side, I think you brought that up, Ms. Roberts, so we can have a buffer on the west side. And that buffer would be for the surrounding properties. And that would meet the 500-foot minimum setback for the Putnam County Land Development Code for a motorsports park, Section 45193 of the Putnam County Land Development Code for Section C for standards and conditions related to use vehicles for riding and racing near surrounding properties. So applying a 500-foot setback on the west side would give us that buffer from anyone riding on that side. It would even act like a little wildlife corridor between his parcels where he's riding and the west side where the residents are going up into the conservation easement that is north, that's now taken away because you've got the RPM alley and all that area they're riding at, that's where there's wetland impacts now from the uses and conditions that are allowed out there. So anyhow, we are also asking that you apply a 200-foot setback on the west side boundaries facing County Road 310 from the distance to the entrance to ensure future land use for properties south across the street from Mr. Alford. There's huge parcels of land there across the street. And their agricultural residential use could have future growth. Maybe they might want to build houses on that parcels or whatever. But with this business and how it is, you'll be able to ride down County Road 310 and see this camping area he's got proposed in this PUD on that west side. So if the buffer was 200 feet in, five foot over, the people on the south of this PUD could develop and they could have future growth, which I think is important for Putnam County. And it would also, let me get back up here. It would also give a buffer and deter smoke from campfires, which is an issue out there. There's a lot of campfires. The smoke emits up into the air and it goes out onto County Road 310. I've gone through it several times. I have to call the Sheriff's Department and I'm, he's, he's starting to notice, I guess, as well because they put signs out. So that 200-foot buffer would let the smoke kind of buffer the trees and that 500-foot setback would give us a break from noise from the odors of those generators that do run all night long during the four-day event. They smell, you can smell it when you go by, if you're out there. And that is a issue. That's a safety issue. Okay, the dB levels out there can be 115 dB, 115. So we're asking you to reconsider the noise from these ATVs for the dB levels. I mean, why does anybody need to ride a loud vehicle that can emit noise at 115 dB? So I don't even think that meets OSHA standards for a working environment. And you've got thousands of them out there during these large events. And of course, right now, the hours can extend 24. So you've got that noise 24 hours. So if we had the 500-foot buffer or more and that 200-foot, and then if you lowered the dB levels out there, this would help with noise, which emits. It can be heard all the way over on County Road 3, it's, what's the road going to interlock in?
315.
315. The noise can be heard all the way to there. So I don't think that's an unusual request to change the dB levels. In Section 4522 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, the uses within a PUD are supposed to be compatible with the terrain and the existing uses and properties of the PUD and suitable for use in a manner without hazards to persons either on or off the, off the site in erosions or other dangers. Riding ATVs is dangerous and allowing the extended hours during events should be reconsidered to protect the general public health, safety, and welfare. The PUD's external compatibility was to be based on the adjacent existing properties and the proposed uses and the design development to avoid undue noise, odors, traffic, and other nuisances and dangers to the abutting property and the general public. This PUD currently has wetland impacts due to non-compliance issues from the owner and the PUD ordinance for mud bogging. The, we wouldn't be here if he didn't have these issues that water management recognized and the county didn't. I had to turn into the state. The county knew all about this. They just were looking another way. The compatibility factors for PUD planning to, in my opinion, do not apply to this PUD's plan with the allowed hours extended for used vehicles for riding during events near surrounding properties. The dB levels and the 25-foot setback near wetlands and the conditions and uses should be considered a nuisance for the environment and the surrounding properties included in the parcels fenced within the PUD. The owner has no control. In my opinion, no one should be riding here at all. The site should close for riding and visitors at a reasonable hour during events. The setbacks in any riding 25 feet from wetlands should be reconsidered. The area surrounding the PUD that existed prior to Hogwaller is zoned residential commercial and abuts conservation land. So if it was supposed to fit into our existing landscape, that's what it was. Residential, agricultural, and conservation land. It doesn't fit, but it's here. But we've got to make it better. That's all I'm trying to ask. And these 500-foot buffers on that west side would be, would help. And the 200-foot setbacks from the property line facing County Road 310, lowering those dB levels and not extending those hours for riding 24 hours at these events, these large events.
You're just about to reach your 10 minutes.
Okay. To encourage compatibility and cooperative relationships between adjoining land uses and surrounding neighbors for their future use is key moving forward. Please consider the property owners who were here first prior to this PUD. The changes requested do not hinder the owner's business model. He can still make money, believe me, and encourages compatibility for Putnam's future growth. And in my opinion, creates an atmosphere and image more suitable for public use in regards to safety, health, and welfare. Striving to truly become Putnam, the eco-family-friendly outdoor county is paramount, in my opinion, for Putnam's growth. And I thank you for your time. I know this is a huge issue. I hope y'all consider the residents and the surrounding properties owners' growth, future growth. We should not have to grow around what he's doing. But if we have to, it is what it is. That's all I can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming forward. We appreciate your being here. And Mr. Locke, we appreciate your being here as well. I think some of the questions have already been answered and are already being handled. I think the wetlands mitigation is a huge piece that is under the auspices now of the St. John's Water Management District. And I think Planning and Development Services are also a lot more attentive to these issues that are going on and the questions out there. I think some of the things that are noisome and a nuisance are just going to be part of being in the area of this kind of activity. But at the same time, there may be ways to minimize the impacts and maximize the use of property. And that, I think, is something we need to be looking at. Ms. Whittington, Mr. Alfred, Alfred, excuse me. Would you like to come back up and we'll give you about five minutes to answer or respond to any of the concerns that have been raised?
So the, the things that I, first is the parcels that have been, the, the little slivers that are in there. I think we've pretty much beat that to death. And again, I think one of you mentioned, if there, if there was a problem with between one of those slivers and this PUD, that would be a civil matter. And so that's how that would be dealt with. She, Ms. Locke mentioned 25 feet, I think. The setbacks to the wetlands have been increased. So, and, and also the impacts have been mitigated and permitted.
Right, right.
Then I think the main other concern was, well, one thing was compatibility of this project and the terrain and the area. That, the county, Putnam County already determined that this is compatible with the comp plan and the area. That's already done. It's stated directly in the PUD and he now has the use allowed as a vested right to, to have that. So I don't think that really is an issue. The smoke, I think what was remaining was smoke and noise.
I don't believe we have an ordinance that deals with non-amplified sound, do we?
Non-amplified?
Right. The sound ordinance in Putnam County is amplified sound, I believe.
Correct. So there's a provision in the Motorsports Facility Regulations, which this is not considered a motorsports facility per se, not as it's regulated in the code. There are some regulations that are applied to this from that section, but then there's also the amplified sound ordinance.
Okay.
I don't know of any other regulation on sound.
Skeet told me something when I, when I first got involved in this. I'd never been to, to this park. And he said that he has a decibel meter and he has used it, he's recorded it. It is, the crickets at the property lines are louder. I'll let you give that testimony.
I've been doing studies. I call them my sound studies and they're, they're my studies. I'm not a scientist, but I've been going over to Rodman Lane. I go over there by Ms. Locke's house on Rodman Lane and I do during the events. And I have probably about 20 on my phone where I go over there at 9:30, 10 o'clock, whatever time when I leave generally at night. And there are some nights that you can hear Hogwaller. I'm not going to deny that. There are some nights you can hear it. But the level is still in the 40 to 50 decibel level. You know, saying over there. It's just, if you, and when I shut my door, you can hear it. I mean, you can't hear it when I'm saying when I shut my door. But then if you get outside, but the crickets, I think the crickets are almost as loud as the, the noise coming from Hogwaller. Now, are there times that we over, yes, there are times when we do go over that. I don't doubt that. But it has to be like a consistent, a condition where the wind's blowing, you know, way hard and anything. Other than that, we're, it's pretty, because, and I've been doing this for the, the last six months because I knew this was coming up, just to check, just to check myself.
Are you using a decibel meter?
I'm using a handheld decibel meter. You buy them on, you can buy them in stores. They're going with the little microphone on the end and you hold them and you, I have a picture of it if you wanted to see it. But you don't, it's, it's a registered decibel meter. It's not one on your phone.
It's not a phone app.
It's a real live decibel meter. And I mean, so yes, we, we, I've been checking it out and there hasn't been a night where I haven't, you know, and I just generally do it on the weekends because we're not there during, during the, we close it. We actually close our trails. We could stay open till eight. We close our trails at seven. Okay. We shut voluntarily. We've been shutting our trails. Actually, now during the winter, we close our trails at 5:30.
Because of daylight?
Because of daylight. I don't want to be trying to go sit somebody in the dark out there, you know, trying to get them out in case they forget. Some people lose track of time and I have to go out there every now and then and say, hey, guys, we're closed.
So do you have riding, ATV, UTV, motorcycle riding, 24/7? Or is it all shut down at 8:00 PM?
In the events?
On what we call the event, which is the 24, you know, we're allowed 24. We've never done 24. The most we did this year, we only did 18. You know what I'm saying? I'm, but we, we're allowed 24, but we've never used all of them.
So to answer her question, during the events only, it's 24 hours? And that's from Friday at 8:00 PM until Sunday at 8:00? During the other days, it's 8:00 PM. And he's stopping it earlier voluntarily. He's, he's been, he just told you he's coming down to seven and now 5:30.
Now we're going down to 5:30 just because it gets dark and I don't want people out there after dark, after. So I think we're, we've done things. We are slowly, and we are transitioning from more of a, to be honest with you, if you look at our name now, we're called Hogwaller Campground and ATV Resort. We're a fancy resort now, so. But what we're trying to get away from the mud bogging.
Fancy resort, okay.
We're trying to get away from the mud bogging stuff. We only do five events now each year that actually have trucks, only five.
That go in the pit?
That go in the pit. We've moved away from that. When we very first started, it was, it was 24. We did it twice a month. We slowly got that part out. Now we're an ATV park and that's where we're at, so.
And campground.
And campground. And we're trying to move to the campground model. We're, business-wise, we're moving to the campground model more with, with the ATV riding. And so we are trying to do that.
I'm going to ask a tough question.
Certainly.
Being that we have that motorsports ordinance for setback and that you do operate motor vehicles inside your park, could you handle and would you handle? Or would it cause your business to shut down if you had to handle a 500-foot buffer along residential boundaries?
It would, certainly it wouldn't shut us down, to say. But I also think it's unreasonable. I, I could go for something less if we have to increase it more.
We already increased it to 100.
We increased it.
500 feet is 1/10th of a mile, basically. Little, little more than 1/10th of a mile.
But how long? How long would you, how long is that western side?
How long is the western border with residential?
It's only probably about a quarter of a mile, probably about 1,300 feet.
Okay.
1,300, 20 feet.
How many houses are there?
How many houses? One, two, three, four.
Okay, there are four houses.
Four houses. And I don't have, I don't get any complaints for those that live on the property line. Don't complain, you know, to us.
Irregardless, which is not a word, really.
Irregardless is a word.
Yeah, it is a word, yeah.
If you did, 500 feet times 1,320 feet, that comes out to 15 acres. That's a chunk of land.
Yeah, that is a chunk of land.
That is a chunk of land.
It's a big move with the fence, too.
It's a.
About 15 acres.
I'm willing to negotiate with, 500 feet and.
Would you settle for 200?
I'm going to go, and I'm going to be honest with you. Ms. Catherine has told me not to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I.
It's, he's a good client. He's fixing to put his big foot in his mouth, isn't he?
I am. And, but she's.
It's okay, go ahead.
Let him finish.
Go ahead.
Here's what I want to tell you. Whether it's 100 feet or 500 feet, if I thought it would make a huge difference, I would be all for the 500 feet. But I don't think, to be honest with you, it's just a feel-good thing because it's not going to change the tea, price of tea in China.
Okay, perception is reality.
One, one other suggestion.
Yes.
Could you consider reduction of the decibel limit to 100?
Yes, here's what, and to be honest with you, here's what we're going to implement in our park on our own. And I, I really don't want it in the PUD because, just because of enforcement issues is the hard part. We are going to require anybody after 8 o'clock not to go have a machine over 80 decibels within 10 feet.
10 feet.
Because, and to be honest with, we're trying to go to a campground model and we think that's something that we are going to implement on our own. We are in the process of doing it. We've been doing the study. I've been going around measuring with my decibel meters machines and seeing what is too loud and too loud, you know, because sound carries. When it's raining, I don't know if you, if y'all understand how sound works. When it's really damp, sound goes a long way. When it's dry air, sound doesn't go very far. Or the wind, all it takes is a 2 mile an hour wind and you wouldn't hear anything on the other side of a, you know, of a field, what I'm saying. So there's a lot of environmental factors, but we are talking about reducing at night our, the, nobody can have a machine over 80 decibels after 8:00 PM.
All right, would you compromise here? From sundown to sunup, would you restrict riding in those areas in a 500-foot buffer area, only from sundown to sunup?
Here's, here's, yeah, here's the issue. I would have to fence it. So.
Couldn't do it.
Because I, people can, you're talking 1,000 acres. People are riding.
So, so 15, or seven acres or 15 acres if we compromised and went down to 250 feet. Out of 1,000 acres, 1,100 acres, that's a small portion.
But you're also, but you're taking away the high ground. You're forcing people. We're trying to force them out of the wet, you know, out of the wetter areas. That is the high side. And I, I.
A lot more high ground on that area other than that 250 feet or whatever along there.
Yes, but you're reducing their riding area that they can ride other than the wet.
Trying to help you be a good neighbor here, Skeet.
I am trying and, and we're, we, yes.
You're already at 100.
I'm at 100 now. So we're, we're.
Can you go with her suggestion?
We didn't create this problem. They did in 2007.
Is the berm, is the berm over there where you're talking about?
Yes, the berm is up all the way on the residential already.
So you've already got a berm?
With trees on top of it.
With trees on top of it?
Yes.
And you're giving them 100 feet buffer?
Well, that berm is within the 100 feet, so.
Doesn't really make a difference.
They're not riding.
Berm's a berm.
And it's fenced off. It's, they don't ride over there.
I mean, I don't know how many people you know that ride these little four-by-fours or, they call them side-by-sides.
Right.
Different one.
Okay.
A UTV there.
My granddaughter, which is 11, going to be 12, we have three or four of them and she rides every one of them because she claims every one.
Of course, she's granddaughter.
I mean, you've got, I mean, if you build the Berlin wall and then you grow some trees on top of it and you give them a 100-foot buffer, I, I don't, I can't see any purpose of doing anything more than that.
Can I say something because he brought my window and he's.
Just a minute.
He has been on my property at the back of my property. I have total.
You've got to be on record, Mrs. Locke, and I can't let you come back up. I'm sorry. We hear you.
He's been on my property.
He's been on his side of the, he's been on his side of the line.
On Rodman.
He's been on Rodman Lane and he's been on.
At the front of my property.
I'm sorry. You're going to have to be on the record and I'm not going to let you come back up and speak.
But on top of the berm and the plantings on the berm and the 100 feet, which is an increase, it was 75, his, his proffer of the decibel limitation after 8 o'clock, that is a compromise.
Right, after 11 o'clock.
Eight.
After 8:00 PM.
That's 300 and. That's three hundred and, what, forty days a year as opposed to the twenty-four events?
The twenty, yeah, and that's the only, the only time it applies is on the, actually only.
When there's no event.
What, huh?
When there's no events.
Yeah, when there's.
It's every day at.
When there's no.
So I'll lose all that property all the rest of the days of the year when there's nothing, when I don't use it. So that's why I kind of hesitate to put a fence over five hundred feet. Because then I would lose use of that property.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Back last time, and I was very new on the board when you came last time, there was a restriction at that time and I thought it was two hundred and fifty feet and you asked for that to be reduced. Was that the area that was, wasn't there some kind of?
That was the same area.
Thing that you said, you know, I would like, you know, you ask if there was anything else we could do. And he said, well, I would like to reduce this restriction from this to this. What was it before?
No, it's never, I, I'm, it wasn't that area. We, we made the seventy-five, we did the seventy-five, the three twenty, we.
I thought it was two fifty and we were down to.
It was proposed to be two fifty.
For racing to three twenty-five, actually I went the other way.
Yeah, on the racing deal.
The racing, it used to be two fifty, I believe.
Yeah, the racing deal, we, you increased it yourself.
Yeah, we increased it.
With the racing deal.
The racing used to be two fifty and we increased it to three twenty-five, I think.
And I think we compromised though to go down to the one hundred feet. Thank you, Mr. Hafner. We compromised to go down to the one hundred feet because I think it may have been proposed in the original proposal to be two hundred feet or it was discussed it being two hundred and fifty feet. But, okay.
You got a twelve foot berm and how, how high you think your vegetation is on the very top of the berm with the trees? Six foot trees now, five, six?
Oh, they're at least seven or eight feet tall or growing.
And they're gonna grow bigger.
They're big bushes.
Okay. I have a question. On this, I'm looking at the master plan on the very west side. It is, by my measurement with my sticky note, it looks about seven hundred feet of that west side is now campground that, was that previously used for riding?
It's future campground.
Right.
Correct.
Is it currently being used for riding?
That's been used for riding now.
So that won't be used for riding anymore if it's a campground. I mean, I know people may ride from.
Well, it's just woods now.
Vehicles.
That's for future campground, if we cleared it, it's not to say I couldn't.
That's not where I saw those blue barrels, like turned over?
No, the blue barrels are in the camping area.
Those are, okay.
They're not, they're, they're not in this area. If you look, that goes all the way to the property line, that hatched area. It stops on the.
That is not.
He's on sheet number four. Is that the sheet you're on?
Well, I'm on the main one, but yeah, it's.
Is it sheet number one you're on?
So those things are not, that's not where the blue barrels are in that area now?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
It's all wooded right now?
No, 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 ma'am. It's still about from where those blue barrels were to the property lines, probably, you know, I, I don't know, a thousand feet, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so if, if that is no longer gonna be, if this is approved as campsites, that area will not be used as.
As riding, correct.
Riding anymore, and that's about seven hundred and fifty feet deep.
Be honest with you, that's way off in the future.
Right.
We have a lot of campsites to fill between now and then.
Right.
Would you be amenable to thinking about having a centralized or maybe two centralized community fire pits rather than each campsite, having a un, an individual fire? Because I know not that many people cook over fire now.
Oh, well.
Not over open flame fire.
Well, but they have, they have campfires and what happens, they, we have groups that get an area and this is families camping, this is, if you come and look at the average age of our people coming out there, these aren't young kids, these are people in expensive motor homes, they're families, they're with little kids and they make an area and then they put a campfire and it's usually three or four families together and they build a campfire.
They make smores.
And they, it's, 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 we're prob, that's why we've been so successful, be honest with you. We're the most family oriented, one of these parks ever, you know, that's why we're.
But is there any way you could put some centralized fire pits amidst your camping areas to discourage these individual campfires?
I don't.
I don't believe that would work.
I don't think it works because people.
Yeah, I wouldn't think.
How would you, because the way, the, the, the way the campground's laid out, I don't see how.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to address some questions.
I understand, but I don't think it's, be honest with you, I don't.
Camping is campfire.
I spent ten summers doing it, right?
What if they have a fire in?
Well, yeah, every residential subdivision could each have a fire pit in their campground.
Right, that's true. What are, are there fires just on the ground or do they?
They, some of them bring, some of them are on the ground.
Metal.
Most of them bring these things that you put, yeah, these portable pits, that's what everybody does now. They bring, they make them or they buy them, you can buy at Home Depot or Lowe's, you see them. That's what, half of them are those and some of them are on the ground, both ways.
All right.
But they haven't burnt the place down, so they must be doing it right.
Had any fire.
Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the board now. Thank you all. I think we understand what, you know, we're piecing together some of the things. So, let's bring it back to the board for discussion.
Madam Chair Person?
Yes, sir.
I don't think everybody here on this board has been out there to see this thing in action. From the time it started till now, I mean, he's been out there for years.
Two thousand and eight, I believe, wasn't it?
Seven, two thousand and seven.
A good period of time.
Started in seven, but it was approved in eight.
My son and his friends and my grandkids come up here from South Florida just to participate on their property. It's known as the Royal's Royce of ATVs, trucking, mud bogging. They've done as good a job as I've seen anywhere and I've watched my kids go through this. And I'm eighty years old, my kids are fifty and their kids are thirty, and I got grandkids coming up with the same thing, ATVs and motorcycles. Noise is noise. They've done everything we have asked them, I remember this going back five and six years ago.
Yeah.
Put the berm in, put the trees on it, make it a hundred feet, make it three hundred feet, change it from here to here. They've been accommodating everything we've ever asked. There's one thing we can never control, that's sound and smoke.
Or wind.
When forests start to burn, my eyes burn. I have allergies and I'm not anywhere near a forest fire. But camping as they have it out there, which is what draws the people. You want to make a little campfire at night, your family gets around, you cook hot dogs, you do hamburgers. Everybody has their own campsite, you don't want to share your food with everybody who comes. But in my opinion, they've done the most exceptional job that I have ever seen done with this type of an operation. And we're trying to change it to make it something that's gonna fit in the middle of a city. It's not in the middle of a city and what they've done, I think, they've done more than try to accommodate everything we've asked for. Birms, trees, change dimensions. I'm ready to vote on it now because I've got to leave too pretty soon. I know Jerry has got to leave and he was shaking his head like I am. Please, let's move on and let's get this thing resolved tonight.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt, as amended, those proposals on item.
All right.
P U D twenty dash oh, oh six.
Okay, there were some things that we have that were entered as amendments that aren't in the original pud that Mr. Quintus presented. One was adding that motorcycle racing is limited to two events per year.
Yeah, as amended, as they presented with the amendments.
Okay, but we got to get these in there.
Oh, okay.
That a driveway apron be provided that would prevent all of the, right.
That's a D O T requirement.
Yes. Now, somebody had said a hundred foot setback on riding on perimeter. That wasn't.
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
No, what needed to, what y'all were feel, feel like need to be changed and it probably does is those interior pieces of property should not apply to the hundred foot setback.
Right, and I don't think it does now, does it?
I think it does, because it says property.
So interior parcels would be excluded from the setbacks?
That's more of application than putting it in the ordinance. I don't recommend putting that in the ordinance because then we're treating some property differently than other property. The, the way the ordinance reads, it should apply to those.
Okay.
But what I don't recommend from a purely, I guess, equal, equal application of the ordinance standpoint is somehow discounting those parcels in the writing of the ordinance. I don't really see any other option other than to enforce it.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Against those lots.
Okay.
Because they're, they're, they should, they're really, they're the same private property that's around the, the bounds of it.
Right.
And so the, putting it in as, it would be diminishing the value of that private property in a, in a way that probably should not be in the ordinance, in my opinion, but the commission.
So what do you recommend we do with what's already in there that implies?
My recommendation would be to, to leave the language as it stands.
Gabriel, page eleven of the twenty-two, which is the red line. Number six, the new sixteen. The entire property shall be fenced to prohibit unauthorized vehicle and foot access with the exception of the entrance and exit. The boundary fence, it doesn't say anything about your slivers and that's your ordinance that you're referring to, so.
But the slivers are a boundary because he doesn't own.
Right.
So they, that is a boundary.
Could we just insert the word exterior boundaries?
I, my recommendation stands the same, I would not treat.
Leave it alone?
Yes, ma'am.
What I, what I would like to see is, is that those boundaries of those slivers, if they're not in a wetland, that they get fenced in. Because you're, I feel like our job is to protect, protect the people that, I'm, I'm fine if we reduce the hundred feet myself, but if, I'll go along with Mr. Quintus on that. But I would like to see that those boundaries, because they are not part of his pud, but they're using it like it's part of his pud, that they get fenced in. Now, if they're in the wetland, they're not gonna be used anyway, they're gonna be away from the wetland. So, and it sounds like to me from what he's saying, most of them are in the wetland, so it's only a few.
As soon as you do that, talked about taxes, as soon as you put a fence around it.
They're gonna have to tax it.
They will be taxed, I can guarantee you that. And those people that aren't paying nothing.
Well, then they might be willing to sell.
Are not gonna be very happy with what we did to them.
No.
Because we're mandating the fence and I don't think we should be mandating a fence there. I don't mind the fence around the entire perimeter to keep unwanted people off. Now, the slivers have access, every access that's imaginable and I guarantee you, they haven't been on their property. Maybe the guy that's in the, where the campground is, he may come over to participate and watch. But the ones out in the middle of the boondocks, where you gotta have a hunting dog to find it, you put a fence on it, now they're gonna be fa, now they're gonna be taxed. And I, I, I wholeheartedly disagree with Gabriel with all due respect, but I don't want you to create a tax on my property for some stupid reason.
Madam Chair, if I may address that point, I'm not sure how placing a fence on Mr. Alfred's property would create a tax on other property.
You're putting the fence around the property line.
But it's on Mr.
I'm not, I've, I've never heard that.
It's Mr. Alfred's property line that's being fenced in.
It's not his, it's not the other one's property.
But regardless, the, the fence issue, in my opinion, again, could be problematic because now, where, where is the opening for the fence? How do we allow people to access the interior of those parcels, so?
That is an issue.
I think we should leave the fence on the perimeter and be done. Any interior pieces, leave it go. It says we don't have the mud bog fenced. When I was out there last week, it was fenced. Very well fenced, as a matter of fact.
I, I didn't mention that the fence was not there. I said that we removed the requirement for the fence.
For the fence, okay, well.
So I, I'm not sure if the fence is, I, 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 it's been six months since I've been out there, so.
You still have the, the pits fenced in because you have campground camping up to, the butts up to the fence. Okay, you're not on the record, so we can't, we can't do that, all right. So, we've got two separate pieces of opinion here. Mr. Danzler feels that the slivers are not, if they're not in a wetland, if they're upland, they should be fenced in. Or fenced out, I guess is the better way of putting it. And Mr. Schwing, and I think Mr. DeSantis disagree with that.
Well, why would we want to, why would we want to fence somebody out?
I, I will say that I, I disagree with Joel on that too, sorry, Joel, because.
Everybody's got a opinion.
It could become a hazard to people on four wheelers, number one. Number two, if those people want to fence their property off, they can come and do just like the other man did. But most people probably don't live anywhere near it, haven't seen that property. I think that's, it's kind of a moot point to me on fencing it.
Joey?
It's mute, don't fence it, just let it ride because.
Let it ride.
It's just, it's plotted out there and it's not really a subdivision.
Yeah, it's planted, but it's not actuality.
Then you have to, like Gabriel said, you have to put gates on so they can have access to their.
There might be people out there that don't even know they own it because people have died and gotten, and their kids got it, they don't even know. I've seen that happen before.
I owned a piece of property for several years, nobody could tell me where it was located. Some finally found it. Okay. Do we want to, to add to the P U D that motorcycle racing is limited to two events per year? Do I have consensus on that? If not, raise your hand.
Well, the applicant.
If not, raise your hand. The applicant wants that, are you all okay with that?
It's, it's in the, on the master plan.
It's on the master plan, but it's not in the language.
But the ordinance controls is what.
Right, the ordinance is what controls everything.
I think it needs to be in the ordinance.
Right, all right.
Definitely.
Do we want to add that the driveway apron will be improved, the driveway aprons will be improved, period? I, I'm having a shaking head up here.
Land development may require more than just improving the pavements.
DOT is gonna require more than the driveway.
DOT is gonna have to say so, but that, but we can put the minimum in the pud?
Yes, Madam Chair, a DOT, so this is a county right of way, so Public Works would have jurisdiction. But, that being said, if you will, please clarify what kind of improvement you would.
The apron shall be paved?
Paved, okay.
Paved apron on both.
But Skeet might not have to pay for it.
We're talking to where the bus turns?
That and where his other entrance is going to be.
But Skeet might have to pay for that, DOT might pay for that, or the school board might have to pay for that because it's there.
It's not DOT, it's county.
It's county, Public Works.
Anytime you come off a paved road, you have to have an apron, whether it's county or DOT.
So. There is an apron, but it needs to be bigger.
I think there's just a straight shot in. It's paved, it doesn't have any flanges on it. But are the, are we okay with those two things being added to the P U D?
Yes.
Were there any other things that we as a board want to add to the P U D?
The only thing I would like to see added is more footage on the residential side. I know y'all feel like it's a hundred feet.
It's not much, it's from here to there, here to the back wall.
Decibels, the crickets are, but I know if I was a resident, I would not want to hear that all the time, especially if I lived there and then somebody moved in on me like that. I, I wouldn't want to hear it.
What's your suggestion?
Well, I mean, if, if what the P, if what the.
Motorsports.
The comp plan said that a motorsports would be five hundred feet, it should be five hundred feet if that's what the comp plan said.
Although this is not classified as a motorsports facility, it is quasi-motosports facility. It's a hybrid.
So what would be a motorsports, like a racetrack?
Yeah, motocross, motocross racing or something like that.
Sort of what we turned down down in south end of the county.
No, what we turned down up behind Seminole Power Plant.
That, south end of the county was turned down too.
Yes.
In Pomona Park.
Oh, that was a long time ago, yeah.
It still is turned down.
It caused the same thing.
Yeah.
Motorsports park.
Yep. So. Five hundred feet, Joey?
No.
What would you go with?
What he's got now.
Aaron.
You've got a twelve foot berm with trees on it, you can't get no higher. If not, you're gonna have to build a border like they did in Mexico, but.
That wouldn't even stop it. Aaron, what are you thinking?
I think five hundred is probably a little excessive, but I, I really don't know, to be honest, I, I mean, I, I think one hundred with the.
I mean, I, I think 100 with the berm is probably, the noise is not going to be much different if you make it 400 more feet, in my opinion, but I don't really know a whole lot about that.
Okay.
100, as it is, 100.
I'm with Joel, but I'm a minority. So, okay. So, we're basically going to leave it as written, with the exception of adding motorcycle racing is limited to two events per year, and driveway aprons will be required on both entrances.
Correct.
Paved driveway entrances.
The amendments that the applicant handed reduce it...
The reduction from 168 to 56 was...
Right, right, those, yes.
The amendments that were brought in by the petitioner.
Right. And the changes, and we've got to list those, so reducing down to, let me get my fingers working here.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt for just a moment. Ms. Fortner had brought up a third item, and I just want to seek clarification. There was a portion of this that she mentioned streets and roads leading to the camping area, that it conflicts with G below. To clarify that, the way that would be read is, in this PUD, the streets and roads would not be required to be paved, but if the commission desires that all the roads be paved, or simply leave it as it is, I'd just like clarification on that.
Madam Chair, I would...
Just a minute, we got Aaron thinking.
Yeah.
No, I just thought that those conflicted with each other, those, I'm looking at the section now, trying to find it, on page 12, that B and G conflicted, because I think the land development code would probably call for paving in the... I know in other RV areas that we have approved, they had to have paved area.
They do, so that's the standard for all recreational vehicle parks.
And that would be included here?
That would be because of the addition of constructing them in accordance. Now, the way that I would read that is that any new ones would be required to have paved roads, or anything that the ordinance requires, not the existing that's currently in place. But if you wish to clarify that, perhaps in B, you can...
I mean, we can't make a change that would go against the land development code.
Well, so a PUD does allow some flexibility in that. Insofar as it produces a unique development or a development standard, needs to be somewhat modified, such as a setback. But given that it's been in this PUD, perhaps in G, we can include that... Give me just a moment here. Perhaps we can write some language in there, except as otherwise stated within this PUD ordinance, in G, so that the streets and roads would continue not to be paved, need to be paved. But as this expands, it is staff's opinion that there's going to have to be some stabilization of those roads and constant usage of those roads. There's a reason why RV parks are required to have paved roads, and it's because of the intensive use of those roads leading to the campsites. So, from staff's perspective, as this expands, it would benefit the public welfare and the orderly development of that RV park to maintain all of the requirements for anything additional that's developed.
So are you saying adding something to the, to the agreement?
I, for B, if, to clarify that, because I do agree it is a little bit confusing to clarify, perhaps the commission can add that the streets/roads leading to the camping area and within the camping area are not required to be paved for, for existing development or for the existing portion of the RV park.
Okay.
Okay. So what you're saying, where he said he was going to be the future campground, out in the middle of nowhere, you want to put a paved road up to there and not where it's at where we got dirt roads now?
They're required for any campground, regardless of where they are. So that's the current requirement, and all campgrounds have to go in PUDs right now, under the LDC, so...
Could we put a time-specific requirement in here, that within two years of the final adoption of this agreement, all roads in the campground must be paved?
That would be, I wouldn't recommend that the existing go to paved, just because they've been permitted to be unpaved, and so...
Skeet, please sit down.
Anything, anything additional over that would be subject to that.
Okay, okay, anything beyond...
So the dirt roads that we have now are fine, but as future development, like he says, in 10 years, you got to put a, some kind of pavement to get up to that.
I don't know what the state of the roads are out there right now, but they may be fine. But what I'm saying is that as you increase intensity of use at the RV park, it may start causing issues with those accesses.
I know that the roads have been lime-rocked and, and are graded and maintained, so I think as long as they're kept useful and not rutted and mudboggy in the road areas...
The roads were freshly graded when I was out there, yeah.
The roads are kept that well. The only thing not graded was that apron that caught my eye. But, so anything new would require to be paved?
If, with that clarification, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Inserting that clarification.
All right. Nancy, are you getting all of this? Are you getting these amendments that we're looking at? Okay.
I believe you are too, Nancy.
Between you and Gabriel, I think we have to list the amendments in the, in the motion.
So there are two amendments listed currently.
The motorcycles and the driveway apron. Okay.
So, I mean, I'm fine with leaving the language like it is, as long as, I mean, it still has to go to development review, right?
Yes, ma'am, as long as the intent is understood that additional camping areas would be developed according to those standards.
Yeah.
Expansion of that camping area.
Which is what it says now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And we've got the three that Catherine added.
What's that?
We've got the three amendments that Catherine has to be added.
Yep.
All right. You know what all of those are, so we can say as amended.
As amended.
All right, do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
You got one on the floor.
I already made it.
Oh, we already got, I'm sorry.
As amended, yes.
You got, you already got a motion on the floor.
And we accept it as amended.
As a correction, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. There are four, five, that Ms. Catherine added, so...
All right.
Are all five part of this motion?
Are they? You all made the motion, tell me.
I thought we said what, the other part was whatever she presented to us, but there changes.
The way I made the motion was as amended, as presented also by the petitioner.
Okay, so as amended.
As amended.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. We had a motion, but we didn't have a second. That's what we didn't have.
Okay.
Got me confused there, Tom.
No, I didn't mean to do that.
You got Tom and Joey this time, not Tom and Jerry.
No, Tom and Jerry, Jerry left.
Folks, all those in favor of the motion as it stands to approve the PUD as amended? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Opposed?
No.
Mr. Danzler's opposed. So we have five to one on this one. Folks, it's been a long day. I know we all didn't get everything we wanted, but your forbearance and your time and your interest in all of this is greatly appreciated. You're exercising your civil rights and your civil responsibilities. And while we can't do everything for everybody, we're going to stick with this for right now, but we all know that this is a PUD that never ends.
Madam Chairperson, may I ask a question?
Yes.
To the chair. When the gentleman David Smith was here, he gave his address as 303, no, 110 Bass Road, Georgetown. And on all his petitions, he is a Jacksonville resident. I just want to verify, does he live in Georgetown, or does he live in Jacksonville?
Maybe he has a second home in Georgetown.
He has a second home.
That was signed was Jacksonville.
Gabriel, can you speak to that?
I'm not certain what the answer to that is.
Can you find out? Let me know, please.
We can, Nancy, can you read out what the...
What he said?
The mailing address is 130 Fifth Avenue North, Unit 201, Jacksonville Beach.
Correct.
The 911 address is the subject, or the subject properties address, so it's possible he moved. I'm not sure.
It's coming, he just gave it, the resident's address is 303.
I have a feeling that's his current office, and he wants to move it.
110 Bass Road, Georgetown.
Sounds like...
Just verification.
Okay.
That's where he goes to fish.
Could be.
I have a feeling that the Jacksonville address is probably where his current office is, and he's looking to move it to Georgetown. Sounds like that's what it is. We still have to approve the minutes of the October meeting, is, thank you, Mr. Perry, for reminding me of that. It's been a long night, long evening.
I said move on approving the minutes.
Hang on.
Thank you.
You approve the minutes, Joey?
You had a motion.
Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a second from Tom. Any objections? We approve the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ones that were presented, the corrected version of the minutes that were presented to us at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
Got it. It is 6:42 PM, the meeting is adjourned.